Just kidding.
I know. And I went and did, oh, no.
Oh, that's fine. This didn't sound very good. Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of September the 11th, 2012. I thank the Garden Club for the flowers for us.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ibera? Member Salazar?
Here.
City Attorney?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any announcements? I'm having to think specific here. Let's see. There's some presentations. The first presentation is to present a proclamation declaring September 15th, 2012 as Arbor Day in San Bruno. Randy? Randy?
I want to give you the last one. I'm the AT&amp;T one.
Declaring September 15th as Arbor Day in the city of San Bruno, and I'll read part of these. Whereas trees in the city of San Bruno contribute to increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy, strips renewal wherever they are planted, and whereas this year's observance and celebration will feature tree planting at Grundy Park, now therefore I, Jim Ruane, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2012, as Arbor Day in the city of San Bruno, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees, our woodlands, and to support our city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is part of the Tree City USA program that we are very happy about to have the proclamation of Arbor Day and to hold the Arbor Day ceremony. As you mentioned, we will be holding it this coming Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at Grundy Park, and we are asking the community members to come out and assist us either as individuals or as clubs and organizations. We will be planting three Chinese hackberries, two redwoods, and six western red buds that day, so there will be a total of 11 trees in all planted in three different sections of Grundy Park, and we hope that everybody can join us out there. So, thank you very much.
What time begins that, Randy?
10:00 a.m. beginning.
10:00 a.m. Thank you very much. We have another presentation. Present a proclamation declaring September 2012 as National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in San Bruno. And I'll read some of this also. Whereas is estimated 20,195 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year. It is estimated that 3,085 California men will die from this disease. The survival rate approaches 100 percent when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 29 percent when it spreads to other parts of the body. Whereas early prostate cancer usually has no symptoms, and familiar predisposition may be responsible for 5 to 10 percent of the disease cases. Obesity and smoking are associated with an increased risk of dying from prostate cancer. Recent studies suggest that a diet high in processed meat and dairy foods may also be a risk factor. Now therefore I, Jim Ruane, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim September 2012 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of San Bruno, and urge all men in our community and throughout the country to become aware of their own risks of prostate cancer, talk to their healthcare providers about prostate cancer. Note that staff has asked to pull item 10A. They need a little bit more on that because we'll be pulling... And I think I said a little earlier, a closed session, where we did not complete that closed session, so we will continue with that closed session at the end of this meeting after this meeting is adjourned. Approval of amendments to the regular city council meeting of August 14, 2012, and special city council closed sessions of August 8th and 14th, 2012, and the nearest correction to missions. Seeing none, they will be approved as submitted. Item 7, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion, second. On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 8, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Item number 9, public comment, an item not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Anyone like to speak with council under public comment?
This is what you got.
I want to talk about the homeless.
Go ahead. Stand at the podium and just give us your name and your street.
My name is Paul. I'm not homeless. I know all the homeless people in this town, and they need a place to go. A couple of years ago, they had a place over, I guess it was airport property, where they made a little housing thing of a tent type of setup, and between law enforcement and the airport, they bulldozed it all down, which put all the homeless people on the streets, in front of everybody's businesses, and this and that. There's a lot of homeless in this town. Some of them know how to operate, some of them don't. Some of them are brand new at it. You've got to give them a place to go. My proposal is, you know, that piece of property that's across from Walgreens, just to give it a try, because it'll be something you can see and almost control. Put a porta potty there and a trash can, and see how they operate, and give them a chance. Now, I know it's private property, or maybe part of it's city property, but at least give them a chance of a place to, so they get out of the doorways of all the businesses and out of the parking lots, and there's a city worker going around picking up their bikes, picking up their blankets, and throwing them, everything in the garbage, and that's totally wrong. They're already having a hard enough time. Maybe there's a better spot than the one I'm talking about, but it's something to look at. It would put them in, I've already checked out the spot, even if they made a lot of noise, I don't think they could really bother anybody, because there's really no housing around Give them a place to go, give them a little bit of freedom, show a little kindness. What do you think?
Well, Paul, under public comment, we really can't address what you're talking about tonight, but you do make some good comments.
I understand. Everybody that just heard my words, at least give us some consideration that, you know, I feel for them, and I help them out. Like I said, I'm not homeless, and I help them out where I can. I feed them, I'll give them blankets, I'll do this, I'll do that, but the world's a little cruel, and we're all part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Chair?
Michael.
I'd like to just offer some comments on the speaker's statement. First of all, I just wanted to thank you for your words. I know it's not easy to come out and stand up for people that are often forgotten, and I think it's great that you're here and you're making these issues known. Wanted to also make a plug for the Catholic Worker House in San Bruno, which Peter Styler runs that operation, provides a lot of help, and you can usually refer people, so if there is anyone that you could refer over to Peter, he might be able to help. And I believe the county is still running a shelter...
Safe Harbor.
They're all full.
They are? Okay.
And so, they're all full. I go to church, and Peter's a great man, and he helps everybody where he can, but he can't do it all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I tried.
Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Milbrae, the city of San Bruno, and the Central County Fire Department for a shared fire chief position.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item is being brought to you along with the next item, 10C, on your agenda, to situate the leadership of the fire department and to advance the city's participation in a coordinated effort with the cities of Burlingame, the town of Hillsborough, and the city of Milbrae to develop a regional means of delivering fire service. As the council is absolutely and fully aware, this city has been a leader in what's becoming known as shared services initiatives to both demonstrate the viability of delivering coordinated services in a regional manner, thereby containing costs, and wherever possible, increasing the level of service available to residents in our communities. The initiative to consolidate and to share and coordinate services among the four communities first began a number of years ago, and most particularly has been in full implementation between the city of Milbrae and the city of San Bruno for the last approximately seven years, where we have shared first battalion chief services, and more recently, for approximately five years, fire chief services. As I indicated, a next step in this process is to move more deliberately towards the subregional sharing with the communities of Burlingame and Hillsborough, themselves merged into a single fire department known as Central County Fire. The particular agreement that I'm commenting on tonight would provide the means by which our four communities share the services of a single fire chief, again, moving from the existing sharing that we've had in place for fire chief services now for a number of years with the city of Milbrae. The need for a change in the way that we were doing business with, in coordination with Milbrae, is precipitated by the planned retirement of our former fire chief, Dennis Hague, and the need for both of our communities to quickly and efficiently identify a new fire chief. The agreement before you is modeled on that agreement that has been in place, or those agreements that have been in place for many years between San Bruno and Milbrae. The language may look a little bit different, but it covers all of the same basic concepts that have worked very well for us over the past many years. I indicated at the outset that this is a coordinated effort, together with the next item on your agenda, which I will turn over to the chief in just a moment, and is the subject of a separate agreement, but I would suggest to you that these two items work together, and they don't really work very well separately, inasmuch as now with the sharing of a single chief and what are now still three separate fire departments, there is really a need for backup support to the chief, and there is a lesser direct day-to-day involvement of a single fire chief in the three different departments for which he is now responsible. So with that, I'm recommending your approval of the agreement that's in front of you. It would have us paying one quarter of the fire chief's overall in salary and benefit costs to the Central County Fire Department, and receiving a commensurate amount of his time and attention to leadership of the San Bruno Fire Department. This same agreement is being considered tonight by the city council in Milbrae, and very soon, I think tomorrow night, by the Central County Fire Board. So, your action is one of three that need to be taken in order to make sure that this agreement is in full force and effect. I'd make one final comment, and that is that the financial, the fiscal impact section of this report suggests some savings that would result over the, compared to the amount that we have been paying Milbrae for 50 percent fire chief services. However, I would caution that these savings are not actually real savings. Those, that amount will be redeployed, as the chief will indicate in a moment, to those backup support services that are necessary in order to make this arrangement work. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Before you hear from the chief, you think it would be all right?
I think that would be a great idea. Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. The second agreement is for a shared deputy chief and a fire marshal position between the city of Milbrae and the city of San Bruno. As the city manager mentioned, it is being considered at the same time in the city of Milbrae. This agreement will allow us to have a deputy chief dedicated to the city of San Bruno and also to the city of Milbrae, shared 50-50, to oversee day-to-day services. It also allows Milbrae to reclassify their fire marshal to the deputy chief's position, which will be shared, and in exchange, San Bruno will provide fire marshal services back to the city of Milbrae on a 50-50 basis. It's part of what we are looking at as a continued streamlining of our staff and our operations. Overall, we have reduced, through the shared administration, this is reducing two positions and reassigning responsibilities and reallocating costs. The money that was mentioned as far as savings is intended to be reallocated to help provide some support service in the position of a fire inspector with both San Bruno and Milbrae, and it will allow us to move to a non-safety position. We are currently in the process of evaluating what the exact need will be between the two cities. We have already provided some small fire prevention services to the city of Milbrae. Their current fire marshal is, as I said, the deputy chief, and he has been trying to keep up with the workload. We think that we're going to be able to bring in a part-time position that will help both cities at a reduced cost. So if you couple the fire chief's position with the fire marshal's position, reassign or redesignate it deputy chief's position, there is some savings that could be allocated towards fire prevention. We will then have one fire marshal who will oversee both cities, and that would be the San Bruno fire marshal, and then under his direction would be the fire inspector. I do want to point out one thing before I move too far along, and that is that on the DS in front of you is the revised contract, or agreement, rather, for the shared fire chief, deputy fire chief and fire marshal. Inadvertently, we had included a draft of it in your original packet, so this, what you have before you is the corrected version with those substantial changes to it from what was in the draft.
Could you, can you help me, tell me then identify what's different from what I, what you're saying, is this is different than what we received in the packet?
It's not substantially different. The report, or the contract that's in your packet had some areas of italicized type, and those areas have been either confirmed, or a question that they posed, that that language posed, has been answered. So, I can let the city attorney speak to that, but I believe that there are no significant issues embedded in those changes.
Right, that's correct.
Can you review this and, okay?
Yes, extensively.
Just so I understand, chief and city manager, so currently, we've been having half a chief, prior, two bat chiefs, this is for San Bruno specifically. Now, the proposal is for a quarter chief, half of a deputy chief, half of a battalion chief, slash then fire marshal for Milbrae, and then one bat chief that we still have in San Bruno. So basically, we're going from a 2.5 to 2.5 as far as headcount allocation from then and today. Is that accurate?
When you said two bat chiefs, were you including the on-duty line battalion chief and the fire marshal position as they currently exist?
Yeah, and for the city of San Bruno, I was including the on-line bat chief, as well as the battalion chief that deals with, like what Milbrae would do for fire marshal.
Well, there are actually two battalion chiefs. There are total three battalion chiefs in operations, and one in prevention. So, there's a total of four between the two agencies.
Right, and I'm just talking about San Bruno. So, we had, prior, half of a fire chief and two battalion chiefs for the city of San Bruno, let's say a month ago, two months ago. So now, the proposal is, is a quarter of a chief, half a deputy chief, that will be new. The half, the battalion chief becomes a half of battalion chief here in a fire, half of a fire marshal in Milbrae, and then the on-service, as you were on call, the battalion chief still.
You did at one point have a fire marshal and another fire inspector. When we promoted to the battalion chief position, the position was classified from a, basically a division chief, down to a battalion chief position, and we eliminated the fire inspector position that had been a captain's position before. He had gone back online, so at one point, you did have two in prevention. You're now going to have half of a full-time position, and then support from the other shared position.
Right, and that captain coming back over, that was a while ago. That wasn't just a few months ago, that was in the last budget for reductions, if I'm not mistaken. Am I wrong, or?
No, you're not, you're correct.
So, when you talked about having some of these savings go to the fire inspector, which is a part-time position, so what are we looking at as potential costs that that would add, or savings that would be saved would be going toward a part-time position? That's part one of the question. The other side of it is, because prior, the former chief had indicated that he had a concern at some points if you took the two cities and had one type of chief, fire or battalion, to serve both cities, and try to adequately give the services that are needed.
I'll address the cost item, and then I'll ask the chief to address the coverage of fire prevention services. On the cost side, the net savings, I'll say that loosely, the net savings that are shown in your report are $49,000. That is the amount that is not being paid to either Central County or to Milbrae for chief and deputy chief services, compared to the amount that has previously been paid for chief services. And that amount, we view as the capacity for the city to redeploy into fire prevention in order to make sure that adequate support is provided to the prevention function. So, the way that the financial arrangement has been structured among the four, discussions that have occurred among the four city managers and the fire chief, is that a rearrangement of the administrative personnel in the fire department must not cost more than what we're already paying. And if you, so that's where the $49,000 as savings is identified, and that amount is available and will be deployed to fire prevention services in order to make this whole thing work. So there is no, these agreements do not envision the city of San Bruno's costs either increasing or decreasing over the current and budgeted amounts.
Is it, two more items, is it fair then that, as this was presented to the city of Milbrae, any savings that they have in are also being deployed into fire inspection in this part-time position, so that, for any of the extra coverage that's needed?
It's my understanding that that is the case. Yes.
And then if approved, I know we had approved a half of a chief for this 212, 213 budget, so then that would be readjusted to a quarter?
Your authorization for this contract would effectively amend the position control That said, the, and those are typically shown in the budget, that said, the final budget, I believe, has reached a very late stage in its preparation, and I don't know that the final budget document will reflect this action, but this action will essentially supersede that position presentation.
The Central County Fire Department for a shared fire chief position.
President B., I'd like to introduce a resolution for adoption.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Next is, we'd like a resolution introduced to authorize the manager to execute an agreement between the city of Milbrae and the city of San Bruno for a shared deputy fire chief and a fire marshal position.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Thank you. Item 10D, adopt a resolution approving budget amendment for the fiscal year 2012-13 general fund budget.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to go ahead with this item, or if you'd like to recognize the AT&amp;T representative, your choice.
Why don't we do that first?
Okay.
Right. We held off on a proclamation until you arrived, and that proclamation is declaring it can wait, no texting while driving, pledge day. I'll read this. Whereas the city of San Bruno holds the health and safety of its young adults as a chief concern, and whereas text messaging is the main mode of communication for most American teenagers, with half of all teens sending between 21 and 70 texts a day, and whereas 90 percent of American teenagers expect a reply to a text message within five minutes, and whereas texting takes one's eyes off of the road for an average of five seconds, and whereas in an AT&amp;T survey, 43 percent of American teenage drivers admitted to texting while driving, even though 97 percent know it is dangerous, and whereas a Virginia Tech Transportation Institute study showed those who send text messages while driving are 23 times more likely to crash, and whereas a driver who sends a text message while driving not only jeopardizes his or her safety, but also the safety of passengers, pedestrians, and other drivers. Now therefore I, Jim Ruane, the mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim September 19, 2012, as it can wait, no texting while driving, pledge day in the city of San Bruno. I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands. Carol?
Carol looks appropriately clueless about that, so she doesn't know what you're talking about.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, and thank you, members of the council and staff, for facilitating this. This is a really important issue to AT&amp;T. Safety of not only our customers, but anybody who uses any cellphone by any carrier is really of paramount importance to the company, and so people think we're sort of a strange advocate for this position. We want people to text, but we don't want them to text when they're supposed to be driving. supposed to be driving, and that includes when you're stopped at a stoplight, because of course you can't ensure that the stoplight will turn green when you're done with your text. So, we actually know that there are some polls out there that say that more than 40% of teenagers say they've seen their parents texting and driving. So it's an issue of public safety, but also about appropriate modeling for teenagers, and nobody wants to imperil their children or other drivers either. So, this is really a serious issue, and thank you for taking it seriously here in San Bruno as well. So, thanks again.
Thank you very much. All right. Kim, you're on, I'll read it again. Adopt a resolution approving budget amendment for the fiscal year 2012-13 general fund budget.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present two amendments to the 2012-13 general fund operating budget. The first item would amend the general debt service fund to include the annual payment for the 2,000 certificates of participation for the police facility construction in the amount of $648,358. You might recall that this debt service payment was previously included in the redevelopment agency budget, as the repayment of this debt is paid for with tax increment funds generated by the redevelopment area. However, with the elimination of redevelopment agencies, as you are all very familiar with at this point, the debt service payment is now being paid through the convoluted redevelopment property tax trust fund process, that is, that we receive funds through via the ROPS process. The guidance that we've received at this point in time is, none of the items that are included on the ROPS, because they are items, commitments of the dissolved former redevelopment agency, those items were purposely not included in the budget because they are now in a, what is it called, a trust fund and paid for through this process, so those items are not part of the city budget. However, these, this debt issuance is a city debt issuance, and therefore, it's advised that we continue to budget for it in the city budget, and then we'll budget for revenues coming in of that exact amount of repayment as it's approved every year through the ROPS process. So that is why you're seeing this debt service payment before you tonight, but none of the other items that were included on the ROPS. The second item that is part of this budget amendment is a request of $15,000 to update the city's cost allocation plan. You might recall that the 2011-12 general fund budget included $15,000 to update this cost allocation plan. It was staff's intent to move forward with that update last year. However, when redevelopment was dissolved in the middle of the fiscal year, the staff work effort focused on sort of foreseeing, seeing the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, and therefore, we didn't want to embark on a cost allocation study, which part of, is surveying staff for the amount of time they spend working on certain projects, so we didn't want to skew any of those results. So therefore, we did not embark on that project last year, but we would like to update that plan during the 2012-13 fiscal year. So the request is to use the funds that went unspent in last year's 2011-12 budget, those funds went unspent and remain in the general fund fund balance, so this request would utilize those funds in the current year budget for that. So that concludes this amendment, the presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Irene?
Kim, do you happen to remember how much longer we have to pay on the police station?
Through 2031.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the questions are answered.
I'll adopt the resolution.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the contract with HB Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $1,570,000 to provide overall project management, engineering services, construction contract administration, and construction inspection services for the Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a amendment to an existing contract between the city and HB Consulting Group to manage and minister and take any and all actions necessary to support the community in the delivery of the reconstruction services to rebuild the Crestmore neighborhood that was so tragically and dramatically damaged by the explosion and fire nearly exactly two years ago. The work that is necessary in order to fully rebuild the neighborhood is underway, has been underway for a period of months now, and is being completed in a total of seven phases. I believe that we are in phase two, so we have a long ways to go, and that's the primary issue that is driving the item that is before you tonight. As you may recall, HB Consulting was brought on board with the city in spring of 2011, and has successfully overseen and completed the first phase of this project, which was to make some improvements to our water's delivery system and impacting, directly impacting the fire-damaged area, and is in the middle now of the reconstruction of the underground infrastructure, water and sewer lines in the footprint of the fire-damaged area. On the display that's projected behind me, you can see the scope of the Phase One work, but more particularly the Phase Two work that is in process, and that is the area that is generally outlined with the yellow dashed line and is colored, the streets are colored in blue. What you see also on this map is the area that is generally colored in red, which represents the streets in the remainder of the Crestmore neighborhood that was impacted by the explosion and the fire. And as the city council is well aware, since the spring of 2011 and on an ongoing basis, our understanding of the needs of the neighborhood and our plans for a complete rebuild have evolved and have significantly expanded to include in terms of geographic territory, the whole of the Crestmore neighborhood, as well as a variety of projects that were not initially contemplated when this contract was entered. The services that are being performed and that are proposed to continue to be performed by HB Consulting have expanded also, not just simply by the number and the types of the projects and by the footprint of the area to be rebuilt, but also by the intensity or the type of services that are really required in order to make sure that this project is done in a comprehensive and in a comprehensive manner, and in a manner that is least impactful to the neighborhood. And I want to spend a moment on that because I think this is an issue that has been a significant concern to the residents of the Crestmore neighborhood for some period of time, and unfortunately, will continue to be at issue and needing our extreme attention for a significant period of time to come as we progress to completion of the projects in process and beyond that, to the projects that are contemplated. Specifically, it has become increasingly a priority that there is literally on-site, on-target, around-the-clock presence by personnel whose job it is simply to monitor and to inspect the progress of the work, literally in real time, full-time, as that work is proceeding. This additional level of service is not typical to construction projects generally, and I would say that even in the case where full-time inspection is provided, I would say it's highly unusual that inspection services, full-time inspection services at the level that we are providing them in the Crestmore neighborhood at the current time is significantly unusual. Currently, we have an inspector who's deployed to each of the two crews that are currently active on the city's contract project in the Crestmore neighborhood, and we anticipate that that, it will be necessary to continue that level of oversight and support, primarily to inspect and to monitor and manage the activities of the construction as it is progressing, but also in a very real sense to provide on-scene support and a go-to presence for residents of the Crestmore neighborhood who continue to have numbers of questions and issues that arise on a daily, hourly basis relative to the variety of construction that is occurring in the neighborhood. While it's not immediately the job of the inspectors that are assigned under this contract, their immediate job is to oversee the, and to inspect the work that is being done under contract to the city to rebuild the infrastructure of the neighborhood. The presence in the neighborhood, given that there are a variety of other construction activities going on, private development to rebuild homes, private development to rehabilitate, to repair damage, to rehabilitate under PG&E's funded program, to improve the exterior appearance and landscaping, and a variety of other activities that are going on within the neighborhood, there is a very high level of construction activity and a very high level of impact to the residents of the Crestmore neighborhood generally. As I indicated, as we move from the immediate fire damage footprint out into the greater neighborhood, we expect that this level of attention and responsiveness to the neighborhood is going to continue. All of these activities are covered within the contract amendment action that is in front of you tonight, and I hope that by the comments that I've made, at least in part, address the questions that you may have about the amount of the contract amendment at $1.5 million. The detail of the work effort that is associated with this contract, as well as the financial analysis of how that, how those activities break out is provided in the report, and I think that they are relatively, have been presented fairly clearly, adequately clearly. Now, I wanted to address a couple of specific items about which I've received questions and maybe continuing to be questions for the city council. First, this contract was originally and is continuing to be recommended as a not-to-exceed amount, and what that means is that by your action, the council is authorizing that services would be provided on a time and materials basis in an amount up to, but not exceeding, a total of $1.5 million. Combined with the three and a half, the $350,000 authorization that you previously provided to HB Consulting's contract, the total amount of the contract then is just over $1.8 million. That's in total. So the amendment is $1.5 million, the previous amount was $350,000. All costs are billed on a time and materials basis. We've provided the hourly rates in the staff report for the various activities and the personnel that are involved in the delivery of the services. And again, your action authorizes that process to continue up to the amount that is specified. Again, costs are billed on a time and materials basis. I can assure you that the, there is a high level of scrutiny that's provided both to, on a day-to-day basis, to the work that needs to be performed, as well as to the amounts that are being billed. And I can assure you that in order to meet the council's expectations and the needs of the community as we move forward on this important project and we move it to completion, that it is a necessary level of expenditure and a necessary level of service in order to adequately meet the needs of the residents that are being impacted. The all costs associated with this contract, both historically and going forward, are covered by the trust fund that was established through the joint efforts of the city and PG&E to assure that adequate funding was available, would be available on a going-forward basis to cover the city's cost exposure for all activities related to arising from and occasioned by the explosion and fire. So that trust fund amounts for this contract, as they are invoiced and paid, are being drawn against the trust fund amount, and this contract, the services that are being performed have no impact on the city's general fund. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for the managers?
I, first of all, I just want to acknowledge that I do understand that because of the level of the sensitivity, that it is important that we do things that are unusual, as you said, in terms of how we support the projects up there. And I believe that Mr. Burrows is doing a great job up there, and so, I do have some concerns, however. First of all, just because of how large of an increase this is over what was initially proposed, and I understand that the area did grow quite a bit in terms of what we took on. However, it seems that, you know, we're looking at this two years after the fire, and it seems like we're still struggling to understand the magnitude of what we're taking on. And because of that, I believe that we need to be more sensitive to monitoring the bottom line of what we're doing. And I know that the bulk, at least from what I understand in the report, the bulk of what we're doing with the increase is the additional monitoring. I mean, only a small portion of that would be for additional project management for the larger area, but that monitoring that we're doing, the day-to-day monitoring, is going to be driving a large part of this cost. And, you know, one thing that comes to mind, I know it's kind of a running gag where people talk about, any public works project has one guy with the shovel and three guys standing around watching them. And I understand that we need the extra level of sensitivity, but essentially what we're doing is we're adding people that are just going to stand around and watch other people do work. And while, I mean, we've seen that, you know, these, you know, that there is a need for additional attention to detail because of the accident that happened up there recently. However, we're going to get to a point, we may or may not get to a point where the funds have been depleted, and there may still be some projects left to do, and people are going to say, well, where's the rest of the money? And we'll have to tell them, well, remember those guys that were standing around watching the work go on? They helped burn through that budget, and now there's no more money left. So, I mean, to me, that's a concern. I still feel like we're struggling, like I said, to get our arms around the magnitude of this, and I don't know if we're at a point now where we can actually outline where we're going to be at the end of this, what it's all going to look like, what all the expenditures are going to be. Do we understand enough now at this point to really fill in all the blanks, or is it going to be continuing to be a learning process until we get to the very end?
So, let me see, you've embedded a number of questions there, let me see if I can provide a response. First and foremost, I may have overstated, but probably deliberately, the- First and foremost, I may have overstated, but probably deliberately, the extra level of care and concern and attention that's being provided to this particular project in this particular neighborhood. However, we've also provided in the report a comparison to the amounts that are being requested under this contract and typical costs associated with project management, contract administration, and inspection. And looking at that comparison, I think you'll observe that the costs that are being recommended through this contract are, in fact, actually very typical and would suggest that at the magnitude of this project, and I get to the project itself in your suggestion that we're still trying to figure this out incrementally and may not have our arms around it. The amounts that are being recommended here under this contract compared to typical construction management and administration and inspection costs are, in fact, quite typical for the magnitude of the cost, magnitude of the project that is being managed. In this case, the project scope was presented, there was a study session, I believe it was, with the city council in December of 2011, at which time we worked through a variety of project concepts and reached conclusion of the scope of the work that was envisioned to address the needs of the entire neighborhood at a total estimated cost, construction cost of $21 million. So, against, applying percentages against that $21 million, again, we get to a fairly typical, we find ourselves within a fairly typical range of project management and inspection I would not want to say at this time that the, we have, that there will be with certainty no change or expansion of the work that might be necessary in that neighborhood, but I would say it is my belief and understanding, based on the work that we've previously done and the decision-making that the city council has previously done, that we have a very clear concept of what the immediate infrastructure needs are within the geographic territory of the Crestmore neighborhood in order to put that infrastructure, that immediate underground and surface infrastructure into a state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art level and make the infrastructure in the fire burn area that needs to be replaced comparable to that which exists in the rest of the neighborhood. There may be some additional projects, if there is capacity, within the $50 million outer limit of the trust fund available to us, there may be some additional projects we want to recommend to you in the future. But at this point, I'm pretty satisfied that we've done a good job and that you've done a good job in evaluating the needs, and we are marching forward according to that plan. The issue of people standing around, watching other people put shovels in the ground, and I sort of have a mixed reaction in response to that. On the one hand, I would say, you're darn right. We're going to have people standing there because it's necessary to the interests and the security of the community to know that representatives of the city are watching every move that's being made by the contractors that are responsible for city projects in that neighborhood. Again, there's a heck of a lot of construction going on up there, and they are not directly inspecting everything, but they are certainly available to be eyes and ears within the Crestmore community to make sure that, for example, the types of things that are normally not a problem when you have a remodel going on down the street from my house. You have construction traffic, you have construction vehicles potentially, or at least being perceived as exceeding the speed limits. You have stockpiled materials that may be impacted by wind. You have a lot of related things that go on that people are concerned about and that the additional presence on the side on a full-time basis is able to address in a real-time So, beyond the standing around part and making sure that everything humanly possible is being done to make sure that the construction is done diligently and properly and without incident, there is an additional aspect to this that has been hugely beneficial to this city, and I would say if you, you might go up there someday and talk to our inspectors because my bet is that they would not perceive themselves as standing around because, in fact, they have quickly become go-to people as city representatives for the neighborhood. And we've actually received, I guess the most telling thing that I could say to you is that the, there was an incident one Friday night a few weeks ago where a resident came home, and this was actually shortly after the very unfortunate accidental breach of the gas distribution line that, in part, precipitated the additional inspection that we're currently providing and that we're, in part, talking about tonight. It was a situation where a resident came home on a Friday night, a week or so after the breach of the distribution line. That resident smelled gas in her home. Now, that would ordinarily be a call immediately to PG&E. Her first thought, actually, was to call the cell phone of the inspector who she had come to know because he'd been standing outside of her house inspecting the work that our contractor had been doing that day in front of her house. He was able, of course, immediately to alert PG&E, but more importantly, he was able to alert us, and we were able to take, us being Harry and myself, and we were able to take care of the ancillary interests or needs of that resident in addressing her fear, her uncertainty, her emotional anxiety, while PG&E took care of investigating whether or not there was actually a leak, which it turned out there was not. So, what was interesting to me about that was that although the familiarity may have come from that person standing there during the day, in fact, those people are providing a real and necessary service at this time in this place and one that your city staff is not otherwise equipped to provide. So, if I missed any parts of your question, let me know, but those are the comments that I would immediately have.
No, I think you addressed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the chair. I was one that questioned the amounts. I thought the report missed the decimal point.
That was your first assessment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And nothing against Harry or what his services are. And I saw the email, and I reacted before I even saw the report. And I think when I see the list and I look at the map, and then you add that human touch, you know, as far as dealing with sensitive issues and what the people have gone through up there, I think it's warranted. I think Mr. Burrows is, I want to say, I don't want to give him this much, I don't want to say he's perfect for the job, but I think he's proven that he's the right person for the job. This is not my, in what I know about construction and construction management, this is not a typical situation. I don't know what would be, other than, you know, planning a city or something. HB Consulting has 300 clients up there and may need to deal with every single one or a majority of them at any given time over the next couple of years, and some of them are not going to be happy. And so, that part, you'll have to deal with. So, I see all of this, and then I hear what you're saying, and I think it's appropriate. And I know that he and his people are up there to address even the private contractors, the private projects and everything. And so, I see some of those duties that are vague but don't necessarily are specific to the city contractor, but could be interpreted, and, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but interpreted to deal with anything that may happen with a private resident. And then you have the very last duty, which is other duties as directed by the city. So, I mean, you look at the numbers, you look at how we want them to be there and how the community would expect us to be up there representing, you know, and it's a time and labor and psychological, you know, labor up there. So, I think it's, I think it's well done, and I look, hopefully look forward to a smooth, smooth next two years, final phases.
Anyone else? I would have to say, Vice Mayor, ask anybody you want for purposes of voting, because we have to acknowledge you on a certain way. It's not just, 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 it's not just , it's not just, 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 I want to add something that I did forget to mention in response to Councilmember Salazar's comment in an additional thought, and that is, I don't want to over, uh, provided to support the neighborhood and not just simply to inspect the project. Don't misunderstand that city staff and different ways throughout the day, every day, is also active in making sure that the needs of the neighborhood and the community are being met. So, this is, this is by no means the only way that this project is addressed or supervised by organization. You have, you express a concern about the, this is a big number, and you express a concern about beyond my previous comment about, you know, how you might consider it to be within the typical range, whether or not we're, and whether there will be adequate to do everything that we need to do. And I just wanted to context that the council is aware that the trust fund has a maximum amount of $50 million. It has a very broad number of things that need to be captured and considered that go well outside even of the physical construction arena. And that said, just to put this in context a little bit for you, and hopefully to alleviate your concern a little bit, through July of 2012, we have expended a reported total of $4.5 million out of the trust fund. Now, obviously, that may not be every single invoice paid current, but it is a, at least it gives you some order of magnitude to where we are, and that would include costs that are associated with this construction activity, but would give you some sort of sense of order of magnitude. Again, the construction costs for the project as it's currently envisioned are $21 million, soft costs, close to $2 million, and then there are, there's an enormous laundry list of other things, but we're mindful of the fact that there is a ceiling and there is a great deal that needs to be done and that will continue to need to be done over the next period of time.
I just want to add that regardless of whether we have, we're fortunate to have the trust fund, and I think this council, this community, and this staff has made it clear that we're going to take care of the people up there, and we're fortunate to have the funds to bring in the expertise, to bring in whatever it takes to take, you know, to watch over them. I also wanted to say, I don't necessarily agree that we're not sure what to do up there. I think we're very clear on what we're going to do up there. I think sometimes we grapple with, maybe we're doing too much because of the sensitivity to the residents up there. Because as much as they want to look forward to normalcy, it's not necessarily going to be normalcy for a couple of years. So, it's like, do we look to the future and then just say, "Okay, in a few years, well, you'll thank us and say this is, you know, this is all well worth it," you know, and then pay this gentleman and his company to put up with what he has to put up with, you know, because it's not going to be normal for these people for the next couple of years.
I'll introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruan?
Aye. Item 10-F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Treadwell and Rallo for geotechnical services for the Crestmore neighborhood reconstruction project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. First, I'd like to thank you for showing your confidence in me and my firm. This item is a contract with Treadwell and Rallo for geotechnical services, primarily soil compaction testing for projects.
Sorry about that. Primarily soil compaction testing for projects that are part of the Crestmore reconstruction. The city previously contracted with Treadwell and Rallo shortly after the fire almost two years ago to help with some of the erosion issues and the geotechnical issues around the retaining wall replacement in the canyon. That contract was for about $79,000. And in October of last year, an amendment was made to that contract. That contract amendment included some additional work related to the canyon, as well as some work on the Phase One and Phase One sewer and water projects. The, those contracts were finished, Treadwell and Rallo still had some additional budget left over. At that point in time, we were starting the Phase Two utility contract, the one that's currently in construction, it's shown there in blue. And so, Treadwell and Rallo has been performing compaction testing. However, we're at a point now where that contract is getting depleted. So, the honor before you tonight is a new contract with Treadwell and Rallo to complete the Phase Two improvement project and to, looking forward, to provide similar services on the canyon replanting effort that's scheduled to occur here this fall, and then the Phase Three improvement shown in red there, which will start in December. And that contract is scheduled to go from December till about May or June of next year. So, this work will take Treadwell and Rallo through the completion of the Phase Three improvement project. recently in regards to testing soils around the PG&E pipeline, the abandoned PG&E pipeline, that effort is separate from this. That effort will be ongoing here shortly. In conjunction with that, there will also be some air quality testing related to the dust in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to clarify that that is different than this soil compaction testing that's here tonight on this item. So with that, I turn it over to the council for questions.
Through the chair. Just one question. How common is it for us to undergo these compaction tests when we're doing roadways? Is that fairly typical, or is it, again, something we're doing kind of above and beyond?
No, pretty much every construction contract you do soil compaction testing on. You want to make sure that, again, the material you're putting back in the trench does get compacted to the specifications.
Okay. So wouldn't that normally be included in a contractor's bid for doing the paving? That they would have to do that?
It's normally not part of the contractor's work. It's normally a service that's provided by the agency. When you have the contractor do it, it's sort of like the fox watching the hen house. You know, there's, you want to have that separation between the testing that's going on and the actual construction contract.
Okay. So normally, the city would be doing that?
Normally, the agencies, I believe the city, does contract on other capital projects with geotechnical firms to provide those services.
Good evening. Typically, on our normal city reconstruction project, when is compaction test need to be conducted, is contracted out separately with a lab who is specialized in doing specifically compaction testing, which is a more limited scope versus this broader scope for this specific project, when the geotechnical firm has more complex scope to provide support with.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and it was mostly for my own education. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce, oops, I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number 11, reported permission to boards and committees. There aren't any this evening. Item 12, comments from councilmembers.
Through the chair.
Vice Mayor.
I know you probably have some action at the end of the meeting, but do want to say that on behalf of the community, that the loss of a dear friend last Saturday, Isaac Mejia, has really taken this community, hit this community hard. And I want to thank everyone for their condolences to the family, to our club, to the community, and just let them know that the family is still devastated and that we do know that there is plans, services planned for Tuesday, a week from today. Timing is still tentative. All indications is that it will be in the afternoon, and all services will be in San Bruno. So that's all I'm, I can appropriately say at this point, but at least we know that we can plan accordingly. The community and surrounding areas will come out and, you know, enforce on that day to pay their respects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers? Item 13, closed session. We will continue after we adjourn here with our closed session, which we did not complete earlier. And we will adjourn this meeting, but I'd like a adjournment with a moment of silence for two things. Obviously, for 9/11, for all of those that passed away 11 years ago today in New York and Pennsylvania and in the Pentagon. And also, as Ken said, in memory of Isaac Mejia. We all know him as the owner of Don Pico's and the Rib Shack and lots of other contributions to our San Bruno community. Very well-known and would be missed dearly. So I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you. This meeting was adjourned until the next council meeting on September 25, 2012, right here at the senior center.